Trying to figure all that out and then right as the meeting started, the Wi-Fi went down. So we're trying to figure this new reality out for all of us. So I thank you for your patience while we were getting our act together. Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll to a staff call, please?
Ms. Soder. Present. Mr. Drenbro. Present. Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Coe.
Here.
Ms. Powell, Straining. Here. Mr. Robinson.
President.
President.
Okay, with that, I'll ask you to stand and if you can for the question of allegiance.
I'm glad to lead this flag to say so. America. And to be like what we should say is one nation under God. In this home with liberty after this world.
Okay. Before you, you have the meeting minutes from September. Oh, wait, I should say, good evening, Ms. Lyons.
Yes.
Do you have anyone seated to speak?
We do. We have November Maxstedt. Maxstedt. So you can go to the podium. All right. Tonight, you'll be voting on the SSA for number 10.
I believe that we're not voting on it to correct you. We're just going to update issue to the board. There's no vote to be taken.
Oh, there's no vote.
There's no action tonight.
Okay. So I just have a few questions since I put that petition together with the help of Don and Penny, who took it around to the houses. So we never received a formal notice when we returned the petition in. There was a verbal communication with Karen, the circuit clerk. And Don, after a couple of weeks, went later for information on the petition and did state that there was enough signatures and only one signature per household was needed.
Sure.
And it needed to be reviewed by.
And that's what we're talking about tonight. That's next on the agenda.
Okay. There was information that several signatures were void. There was no official certificate, deletion of signatures, or any further communication.
So that's what we're going to be doing tonight is communicate.
Okay. When, after you discuss it tonight, what's the time frame if it is the petitions have accepted? What is the timeframe before you can do another petition on that, another SSA?
It'll take the week pass.
You know, if it doesn't pass, when can you go forward and do it again?
So to start the process again, I think there's a 24-month cooling off period and it starts back up again.
Okay.
But again, I think through our conversation here tonight, it's just updating the public about what our findings were with reverse.
Okay. I just wanted to know because.
Your question.
Okay. It's just because if I, we have to redo it because it's not accepted, wanting to know what the guidelines are.
No, I think, I think that, I think all of your questions will be answered too.
Okay, thank you.
Probably the next five minutes. Yeah. Exactly. Yep.
And we also have Daniel Richard.
That's me, but I'm here with the same regards. And so I feel like, fair enough, I've been, that's covered. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, there's your meeting minutes from September 4, 2025. Please review them at this time. And I'll entertain any motions to either make some changes or entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
We should approve. Okay.
Questions, comments?
We, it was discussed, I believe it was in new business, about, uh, in, you know, it asked about a certain neighborhood and I'm not seeing that in the minutes.
I didn't last meeting. I did it the meeting before, but the chief wasn't there. Oh, he lost, but they just couldn't answer.
That's right. No, it was Sergeant, not Sergeant.
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant Midlock was here. You just asked him and that wasn't.
You're right. So can we include the neighborhood information? Is that what you're asking?
Just that the question was asked.
Nothing's in the minutes stating that anything was asked about that. So I think that needs to be included.
Or would you, in parents' sake, would you prefer that we table the minutes and bring them back up? Or be, there's a motion to approve and a second.
I got it.
So or we could.
Can I add a friendly amendment?
Yeah, I think you could make a friendly amendment.
Okay. I would like to friendly amend. So we could do that one of two ways. If I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
We could either make them do the formal amendment, I meant to add that. Or the chair could ask if there are any objections to the friendly amendment. Or we could just, a lot of times people disapprove them with the amendments. But I, I like the more formal way, the motion to amend with the insertion of language regarding the question regarding the neighborhood. They were the emotion of second, we would amend it and then we'd approve via as amended minutes. I like the more formal way.
We have a motion to second, so how do we go about withdrawing? That's not something we know.
We can withdraw, we can withdraw the motion and we can withdraw it as amended and just, who made the motion?
I made a motion, I didn't withdraw it.
And the chair should ask if there's any objections.
Is there any objections to the withdrawal of the motion?
Who seconded it? I didn't. And you withdrawn it.
So I would ask that, Mr. Robinson, if you.
I would like to make the motion with the amended, to approve the amended minutes. Is that correct?
That's fine.
All right. And we all, we have the understanding of what's the new, so the motion in second. We have a new motion on the table, the other one is withdrawn.
And the other, but it's rose semen.
Yeah. Yes, it's, it's spoken. Thank you, Siri.
We need a break.
Okay. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Drenbro. Aye. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Ms. Powell, Straining. Aye. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
And. Aye. Left for Kansas.
Good evening, Mr. Hedges.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Don't we need a motion to approve the minutes now?
We did.
No, we did. We were true minutes.
Okay.
Now you got, now you took it away from Mr. Hedges.
Yeah, well, I mean, try it.
He's a short timer.
With that, Mr. Mayor, we will provide an update on the proposed expansion of special service area number 10, White Oaks Pond. You have an agenda supplement from Mo in your packet and you have a handout on your desk. Mo, would you like to.
Yes.
Delete one just through this, Mr. Penn.
Yeah, so the agenda supplement is kind of outlining the history of White Oaks Pond SSA. Back in 2001, there was an SSA approved for White Oaks Pond subdivision. And then future, there was some additional lots that were not part of SSA that were essentially hooked up to White Oaks Pond. May 1st, you pass, Village Board passed ordinance number 2519, which proposed, approved the proposed expansion of SSA number 10 instead of public hearing day of July 17, 2025. On July 17 of this year, the Village Board held a public hearing to solicit comments regarding the expansion of SSA and has also opened a 60-day window for property owners to submit a petition objecting to the expansion of SSA meeting time. On August 6, 2025, a petition objecting to the expansion of SSA number 10 was submitted to the village clerk. The signatures and addresses were verified and it was confirmed that at least 51% of the property owners in the proposed expansion area have signed the petition. I have given each one of you a copy of the petition on the dais. And even though I did not include in the packet, we have to redact pretty much all the information. So I just printed it off for you.
Due to signatures and addresses.
Yes.
I just would like to put that out there.
Yes.
But that's why this was not included in the packet, because.
But it is available if anybody wants to submit a FOIA. We will release the document with redactions. But for your sake, I want to provide you the full document with signatures, addresses, and all that such. Because of the 51% of the owners signing the petition, the SSA vote cannot move forward. So this actually kills the process. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer this.
So this is, this is it, right? We can't, there's no vote to say we're not doing it, there's just we're not gay.
Yeah.
Fair enough. I do have a legal question. The people that are bearing the brunt of SSA now, can they, now that the people that, all the new ones that have signed off and are tied on to the SSA to the use of the pond, can the ones that are on it currently get off of it?
I will research that matter. I do not believe that they can, but I will research that.
Just, I guess, two comments. One is, I think this petition and what the residents did, have their voices be heard is a good example of the right way to go about things to change if you disagree with something the village is doing or you want to come together as a community to stand up for what you believe. So I want to applaud the residents for following that path and not just yelling and making a lot of noise. I think that that shows a lot of, I give kudos to those that do this. Regardless of how I feel, I think everybody on the board knows how I feel about SSAs in general. What, what I would ask is that as a village, we learn from this. The reason why we were putting them on the SSA, which isn't in the memo, is because we did a bunch of work to fix flooding in that neighborhood, which required connecting them to the outlet that goes through White Oaks Ponds and is a part of SSA 10. My understanding or my belief is this should have been a part of that original discussion before we did all of the work, that this would incur adding to, to fix this. It would incur those residents to join an SSA because it goes into that area that has to be maintained. That wasn't done.
Nope.
So we had to come back and have it as a separate motion. So I just hope that when we look at things in the future as a village and we look at these type of fixes, if it does, if we're taking, and I don't know how often we would ever do this again, but if we're taking a business or residential community and we're adding them into something that other community residents are covering the cost for maintenance of, or whatever it may be, that we're holistic in our approach so that everything can be known upfront so that you don't, we don't end up in this situation again. So on one hand, I applaud the residents for following the right steps. And on the other, I think it's a learning opportunity for us as a village.
If I could piggyback on that, then for future projects like this, and then from what you're saying is to ask the residents if they would want to go onto that SSA in order to fix it, where does that leave us with? Do we fix it then? Because if we're going to connect it to an SSA ponded area, does that mean? And where does that leave us? Do we have options at that point?
I'd like to address that.
Thank you.
When we.
Hard to even ask.
We talked, I linked about this at the last meetings, I recall, when all the residents read it. We had three major flooding areas. We fixed Highland, this was the very first one, this was the worst one we had. The village fixed it because it needed to be fixed. It had nothing to do with the SSA, there was no consideration, it needed to be fixed. Now, later, fine, but at the time, I don't believe we would have been able to read it, to be concerned about the SSA.
Okay, so then just. So then just fix it anyway and then.
It was a big priority. We had, on a Sunday morning, I was over there because people's basements were about to flood. The public works were over there sandbagging it. So yeah, it was pretty bad. And now it's, it's not bad.
I get that part, it's just a matter of then. It puts an added burden on all those that are in the White Pond SSA. They're paying for not only their own water, but the water coming from multiple streams in another subdivision. So if something should go wrong with that.
They're not paying more because these people are in it, so.
Well, they would be paying less because if something goes wrong, because there's a lot more water going in there than was originally planned when they entered into that SSA.
I answered your question. Yeah, and I want to be clear, I'm not saying we wouldn't fix it. I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying we could have provided all of the information as a part of the fix of what this could mean down the road to begin.
I just wouldn't want to.
I agree.
Unless the residents vote to be in an SSA, we're not going to fix it.
That's not what I'm saying.
That's all I was trying to.
Yeah, and that's not what I was saying. That's why I'm saying I want to clarify, because I think it may have come off, but that's what I'm saying. That is not.
No, just a process question. I have one more, just, just another legal type question is, is the clerk of the village is the one that notarized all this? And that would potentially almost make her a party to it if it ended up going to court and let's just say her seal or her notary was expired. And she's a staff member of the village. So usually, like with clerks, they won't touch the document if they're receiving. And I don't mean village clerks, I mean like, and I'm thinking for things I've filed in the past, if I'm filing it with that office, that office will not let any notary from their office notarize it, it has to be done someplace else. Otherwise, their staff member becomes party to it. So I'm asking that to counsel.
Sure, so. You, sorry, thank you. Agreed that, let's bifurcate these issues, the, for the election proceedings, and this is akin to one.
Uh huh.
I would be very resonant to say that the village clerk ever stamps petitions as they come in. I would always say, do not do that. This is, to me, a distinct type of process because it does deal with residents exercising their rights pursuant to the special service area law under the Tax Act. Luckily, our clerk is diligent and she's a great clerk and she kept her notary stamp up to date. I think 2027 is your expiration date. Is that correct? I like to put her on the spot and it's 2027, right? Yeah, so we're, so we're going, so there's no reason for a law. I do think so in the instance of election issues now, I'm happy to write a memorandum about it. Absolutely not, no one should manage the petitions out of. This, to me, is a distinct situation akin to a normal election petition, but it's not governed by chapter 10 of the All Attorney Statute, but rather chapter 35, which is the property tax code under which the Special Service Act law is a subset. So your point's well taken.
Okay.
But I do think this is more of a function of her duty to the residents rather than one of, I am an advocate for my own office electioneering and stamping on there. But it's a point well taken. And just so the clerk knows, during the election season, a clerk cannot, I would say, tamper with a petition. You cannot touch the petitions, you can't do anything with them. This is a little bit different. If you need more explanation, we're happy to meet with you.
I believe that we had this conversation at that time and it was legal council that advised us and said that it was, we were able to stamp it in this fashion.
Oh, for this?
For this.
Hundred percent. Yes, this I'm not worried. But for, if it was an election petition, it's completely the opposite.
I just want to say for the record that we checked before we stamped.
Sure, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Check and then stamp.
Appreciate it, I just want to be sure.
Because I believe that was your gut as well, which is you got to take this somewhere else to get this stamped because of all the elections. And then because of it having to do with our residents and that kind of stuff, we just said, okay.
That's a good question.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any questions about this, any other discussion? There's no action tonight, it's just purely informational.
So for residents that are here, this is no longer an issue for you. It's gone.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're more than welcome to stick around for the rest of the fun, but if this is why you're here, you can, you can venture off into the wild blue yonder.
Do you want to be any popcorner?
No, popcorn tonight. Sometimes we, sometimes we do have cake.
Why you buy a cake for him? This is his last. For Jay.
Oh, we've celebrated Jay and we've got.
That was last week.
We might have some other tricks up our sleeve here, we don't know.
I was going to say, I've been on a board of directors several times, I don't need to stay. I'm fine. You're so hard, lady.
Hi, Mr. Hedges.
Sure.
With that, Mr. Mayor, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Hampshire Fire Protection District regarding after hour building service, excuse me, building department service. You have an agenda supplement in your, in your, on your tablets for Mo and Chief Schmidt is here.
Mo, do you want to walk us through this?
Yeah, good evening. So the village contracts with Safeville for building services and permitting services. Those are during normal business hours, so eight, eight to 4:30. We don't have after hour services with them, so if a car crash happens, then I can.
Let's say, yes, let's say when something like this happens, or a car decides they're going to go through the Casey's or a car is going, it's had a, it's happened more than once. So it's not, yeah.
It's yesterday.
Yeah, exactly. So it's happened more than once.
So when the situation occurs, we don't have anybody to come out there and assess the situation. So myself, the police department, and the fire district held discussion on how to address the situation when there's an after hour emergency. And when we came to an agreement was, was entering to an IGA to grant the authority to the fire district to red tag or tag a building if it's deemed unsafe by the fire district. And then our instructor will come out the next day to further assess the damage and figure out next steps. So this essentially gives the fire district authority under the village to tag buildings for, on structures or unsafe structures in the situation that does occur after hours. And on how.
My only question is, whoever on the fire department is going to do this, do they have any building experience, construction, carpentry, masonry, structural training or certification to make that call?
I will turn it over to Chief Schmidt on this one. I think it's definitely.
Absolutely.
Well, let me start by saying the most common time we red tag a building is after a structural fire, where the building's unsafe. So that's very straightforward. If the building doesn't have power, if it doesn't have water, if it doesn't have heat, things of that nature, or it's unsafe, or the fire's been in the main part of the home, or it's just unsafe to be in. When it comes to, you're speaking about a fire into a building, we will call a technical rescue specialist out to the scene to assess the structural stability of the building. So we will bring in technical expertise. But I can tell you, in the event we could get a hold of someone, we go with our experience and if we feel it's unsafe, we're at least tagging it for the night and having the village or the contractor come out in the morning to follow up. But we're always going to err on the side of caution so nothing happens to the residents if we err on letting them go back in.
So I, with that, I, I remember, I remember this one with the latest round with Casey's. You, you were out of town or something and.
I got the call and I called, I called Safeville.
No, I remember, but somehow or another, the book hadn't been updated, that's a whole nother thing. But one of the lieutenants from the fire department called me because Burlington was the one that tagged it. So because you guys were out on a call somewhere. So I guess my question is, is this was very much written for the Hampshire Fire Protection District? And I know that you have other, you know, companies that come in and cover and that kind of stuff. And you guys ultimately have the authority, but let's say that Burlington or Pingery is in here covering for a fire or something of that nature and they're in command and they make the call, does that, is that covered under this agreement?
It's not. So we are going to be working with the other adjacent fire districts and coming back with similar IGAs with Harley for Fire Protection District.
Well, I guess the question I, the question I would have been asking is, if you guys have wisdom, Ilias Agreement or Mavis Agreement, where you, how, can we, can we incorporate that into this agreement? So that this way we don't have to have independent agreements with the fire protection district? Because they're, they're ultimately in charge, it's their district. But if they're out of the district, another agency comes in and I just don't want to create more headache or more paperwork at the end. At the end of the day, we're trusting Fire Protection District to make the right call. That's what they're there to do. And if they're out and not able to lead the call, then we should, we should afford that same authority to the people that are keeping our residents safe.
I'd feel more comfortable having them wait until our Hampshire fire people get back.
Well, that's not always possible.
Because the liability for Burlington or Play-Doh or Pingery or whatever to say it's okay to go in and something should happen, they're going to be partially on the book. So they're going to red tag it no matter what.
Well, yeah, but that, but as they should.
And I would feel more comfortable for our residents if they held it limbo until somebody from Hampshire came out when they got back from their call.
The other point I just want to make is that we do have other fire districts that cover the village of Hampshire. So Hampshire Fire Protection doesn't cover all of the proper Hampshire, Harley, I think, and Piggrove will be in the future. So we would still need IGAs with that because they cover portion of Hampshire property.
No, and I get that, but I guess, my concern is if Hampshire's not there, because it happens. I'm not, I'm not being disparaging to the department.
No.
And I just, I just don't want, I don't want Burlington to come in and say, okay, well, we can't tag this building, we're going to have to wait. And then you have, you have somebody that says, fine, if you're not going to tag it, then I'm going to go in and then they get hurt. You know, and so like, my concern is trying to keep the residents safe. So my, my question purely is, is if Hampshire's not available and they're not on that call, what happens? Because that happens.
But I can't, I'm just kind of thinking, even if myself, deputy chief, florist around town, we have a, we have an acting fire chief, a lieutenant, and I can't think of an instance where they would be unavailable for an extended period of time. And I would actually encourage them to make sure that we're there. Okay. Agree that, yeah, that we be the ones to make the decision. I'm good with that.
If you're good with it, I'm good with it. I just don't want to cut anybody's hands off and make it to where they can't make calls that they need to make. I need you guys to be able to keep our residents safe.
No.
That's what needs to happen.
Quite honestly, from past experience, when we were in another community for a fire, we typically defer because we didn't necessarily know the rules of engagement for that community, what they considered, what was something that needed to be red tagged and followed up on versus maybe it didn't. So if we were in someone else's town, we always deferred to them.
I just, like I said, I remember distinctly that Burlington was on the call and they tagged it and then we had to try to get Safeville out that night to verify. And you remember, we didn't.
They were here. Safeville was here within a couple of.
Right. I don't want that situation to happen again, but we're good.
Quick question, chief. Is, you said to bring in an expert, I'm assuming that's someone from the, the fire district, correct?
Actually, the expert we would most likely bring in is one of our fire district personnel weren't available on a technical rescue team, were part of a neutral eight box alarm system. So we're going to bring in someone from the region with that expertise.
I just want to make sure there was no other costs incurred.
No.
So, but I think it's great that we work together on these things. So this is in regards to that, but just an authority question. Let's say hypothetically, a car enters a building. Do our, does our police department not have the authority to not have people reenter that building until it can be deemed safe?
So we don't have the, we, I mean, we don't have the authority to prevent someone from entering the building after we leave the scene. We could certainly control it while we're there, but.
But you won't leave the scene until the fire department's there.
Right, but we don't, but we don't have the authority to tag it to say this is unsafe.
We don't, okay. But the fire department does.
Right.
Got you. Okay, understood. I just wasn't. I didn't.
They will.
Okay.
They don't have the expertise.
Right.
You could give them the authority, but they don't have the expertise.
Right.
Any other questions for Mo or either of the chiefs? I'll entertain a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Hampshire Fire Protection District.
So, second.
Questions, comments? Vote, vote, please, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Ms. Powell, Straining. Aye. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Soder. Aye. Mr. Drenbro. Aye. Motion, yes, six, seven.
Thank you.
With that, we would ask your consideration of a motion, we would ask for a motion to approve final payment number three for water well number 12. Equipment removal and inspection to Land Christensen Company in the amount of $5,682. And include the change order number one in the amount of $32,669. I mean, first of all, say this is a reduction, change order that reduces the $5,500. Can you have an agenda supplement from Mr. Dennison in your packet? And Mr. Paulson is online if you'd like to ask him any questions.
So does anyone have any questions?
Pretty straightforward, we say bye.
Well, I do.
I'm Jeff.
I'll entertain a motion to approve final payment number three.
Go vote.
Second. Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call, please?
Mr. Coe.
Aye.
Ms. Powell, Straining. Aye. Mr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Soder. Aye. Mr. Drenbro. Aye. And Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Motion, yes, six, seven.
Thank you. The next two items I'm going to suggest we bracket and I'm also going to defer to Mr. Kelly, Tristan Kelly. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you, so before us is going to be two facade grant applications, uh, the agenda supplement does include the line items for each, the projected amount, the seventy-five percent award amount. So the projected amount is the total amount of the project, seventy-five percent amount award is if the village board wants to do the seventy-five percent. The total that that would be, and how much would be remaining after these left in the facade budget for this year. So when you see remaining, that's how much if these are approved at that level would still be in the facade budget for this year. Um, there is no official BDC recommendation for these, because the BDC was not able to meet at the last meeting, but we, uh, discussed with the chairman and um, staff, and it was agreed that they should go on the board agenda for board consideration without official BDC recommendation, so that the projects, if approved, could start as soon as possible, especially with winter coming up. Uh, we know how that can affect projects, so there isn't an official BDC recommendation for this one or any discussion that had occurred, but with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Smallwell, who is here to talk to us about the projects and answer any questions you may.
Good evening.
Hi, welcome.
Hi there. Um-
Nice shirt.
I think, I think you mean good. What in Rome?
Yeah.
Um, you've got two grants over your consideration this evening. Um, I'll take them one at a time, just since it's presented on your agenda. Uh, the first is the property, the doctor's office owned by Lynn Klein and her daughter Lisa. Uh, there were some masonry issues identified when they opened up the courtyard between the two buildings for Neon Cow. Uh, the contractor took down that wooden wall and noticed the masonry on the side of the doctor's office. Um, it's, it's going to come down at some point, so he immediately contacted her, and that's part of the reason, part of the consideration we see before you, is masonry work on both the side, uh, and the front of the building. Uh, one of the components, uh, that I requested they add to the masonry work is the removal of the old cornerstone of the Ella Johnson Memorial Library as part of the masonry work. They're going to be tuck pointing all from the building, and I asked, is there a possibility, and if so, how much, to remove the cornerstone and insert matching stone? And they said, absolutely, we can do that. And I said, please include it. Um, uh, in contacting the property owner, I said, to your, your cornerstone, what would you like to do with it? And she would like to donate it to the library district after its removal, and if they refuse it or decline the offer, uh, she suggested that be donated to the historical society. So that's what happened with it, but I'd like to review the grant real quickly, I mean, components and scope of their proposed project. Um, they have a photo rendition, hopefully you folks have this, of what the finished product would look like. Um, the masonry work on the front is from top to bottom, left to right. Uh, there's some work around the windows that they need to do, uh, tuck pointing, and the project also includes painting. Uh, the painting work is inside, I don't know if you call this a bestie duel, but the doorway here, when you look up, the ceiling is in bad shape. And they're also going to repaint the window frames and units to match the awning, which is going to be black. So, it'll look nice, um, the two planters that you see out in front on the sidewalk are considered streetscape elements, which are also eligible in addition to the masonry work. So the package you see includes, uh, painting work, masonry work, uh, the awning on the front, and the planters. And beyond that, replace another commercial door. The door that's on there right now is wood, um, it's showing its age, and they're going to replace it with an aluminum clad commercial door with a, a light in it, a glass window in. Um, so they showed me everything they intended to do. Uh, one additional item that they're going to do, uh, is related to lighting, which is normally eligible, but they're going to bear the cost themselves. They're going to backlight the glass block wall uh, with whatever color, and they're going to have it on, and it might evolve or, you know, change colors or whatever, but um, as part of the, uh, exterior work, that does not be for you, they're going to prepare that themselves, but with that, uh, do you folks have any questions that I can try and answer with respect to the project?
Yes.
Fire away.
Um, looking at the photo, it looks like there's a very dark spot in the front of the building, is that?
Intentional?
Yeah, you see it near the top, very top of the, the top center?
Yes, there's two of them.
Those are the masonry issues?
Um, that's really more, I think, just degradation of the natural stone, being a natural stone, it has weak spots in it, and sometimes they discolor and change over time. Um, I would hope that the mason in his work would either clean it up or, in addition to the joint-
And they tuck lean.
They'll bleach it out.
Okay.
They'll bleach it, okay.
And I did have one more, you mentioned that when the wood, forgive my term, wood wall between Neon Cow and this, this property was taken down, the masonry work, did you say was, was going to come down?
Um, it's just compromised, it's deteriorated, at one point, uh, over time, the sidewall of the doctor's office, it's allowing water, and water is not masonry strength.
Correct.
It's freezing and thawing, and starting at the top and down into the wall, the bricks are, uh, swollen. And, uh, the masonry work is compromised, so they need to tuck point a good section on the side, and, um, I think there was addressing some issues along the top wall.
Okay.
Could happen.
And maybe that wouldn't be a question for you, but is that a safety issue right now with the people that sit in that corner?
It, I, again, I'm not a, a-
Probably not.
Engineer, not my, that's, but beyond my pay grade, but it doesn't appear to be a concern, I'm confident Donald Verdi, the gentleman that noticed it, would have said, you're not allowing anybody out there with that great case, it's just something he said in time, this will become a problem and it will-
Gotcha.
So, um, with that, uh, he contacted the building owner and made him aware of it, and she responded right away. So we put people here as well.
Oh, of course, yeah, I just wanted to make sure we have an imminent safety concern for those sitting in that. Okay.
Very good question.
Thank you for answering.
Sure.
Do we have any?
Yes, I have a question, are there any, you mentioned water is part of the problem here, is, is there any water removal, like gutters or any sort of system that, obviously I can't see it in photo, I'm just curious, if they will also be addressing that issue, is that part of this? Um, or is that something they plan to take on?
They got a curb on the front.
Yes.
Somewhere on the roof, there's got to be downspouts that shoot out the alley or-
I think it's a, a slope roof to the rear alley and the gutters are on the back of the building. The water doesn't run to the sides, and what led to the compromised masonry is just deterioration over time and as masonry, and the tuck pointing deteriorates, it just starts to allow water in each time it rains. And I, I believe this has been probably going on for quite a number of years. And it just wasn't recognized, in fact, it was behind that wood wall, did, you know-
It wouldn't see it.
It went unseen.
It do, right.
So, all good questions, um, can I confirm the dollar amounts of, uh, Karen, as village clerk, I want to make sure that the dollar amounts are, uh, correct, I called each of the respective contractors to confirm, because there was a, a question about it. Um, can I review the corrected amounts with you or present them to you at the end, because it had a different amount? The seventy-five percent appeared to be a different amount, or it's like four hundred dollars off. How do you want to handle this?
Well, why don't we, why don't we handle all of the totals at the end?
Okay.
So move on with your presentation for the cave. If there's more questions about that, then we'll go over the amounts and add everything all together, so we know we'll vote in.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Well, we will need the exact amount we're voting on for that to be able to-
Would you like to power it?
Yes.
At the end.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's get all of our questions out, and then you can lead us through where we'll go on, I'm sad.
Fair enough. Next before you is an application from the cave. Um, primarily for windows. Um, the number of windows, I think, seven?
Nine.
Nine, thank you, seven on the street side, two on the Maple Street side. Um, it involves wrapping, uh, the window frames afterwards with aluminum, which is hopefully going to be maintenance great. Uh, complete any tuck pointing needed, and replace the window units, which are failing miserably.
Now, they requested this one before the BDC shot it down.
Yes, and there were multiple reasons and differing reasons, this will actually be the third time that this has been heard.
And how many, how many times will this be that the cave's been approved for a facade improvement by the BDC?
They've been approved once, and it was for repairs different and other than what you're seeing before you today.
How much was that one for?
I don't recall the dollar amount, but I remember the building elements and components of that application, new roof, gutters and downspouts that didn't exist were added. Um, they wrapped the awning, they removed the wood shake and put black, uh, raised panel metal on that. Um, they modified the awning so that the semis, when they turn out of the alley, don't clip it anymore. And it included, uh, scraping and painting of the window frames on the first floor. Uh, to the best of my recollection, that's what it involved, but the dollar amount was, I don't remember.
Yeah, the big issue was because of no gutters and downspouts, the sidewalk was lifting and eroding and sinking, and it was causing some severe issues, and so it really fixed all of, or addressed what was causing those issues.
Ms. Lance, are you able to get us that number as to how much they've gotten in advance?
Yeah, I'm trying to get it from-
They need us for all three of them.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, you could continue that while we're doing the rest.
Is there more that you're going to share with us, well, about that, or are we going to have questions?
Um, that was pretty much it.
Okay.
There's one additional item up on the second floor where there's currently a wood door, uh, an interior door is on the outside of the building, and they're, I'm going to replace that with just a simple new steel door.
Okay.
For security and weather, weather resistance.
Can you, if you know, can you explain the difference between this proposal and the proposal that was denied? What was that, last, the last year or two years ago, I don't remember when it was sent in. Do you know the differences in proposals?
Uh, to the best of my recollection, I will try.
Thank you.
Chris.
I'm sure yours is better than mine.
I too am, uh, whether it is as my folder that I've been carrying around and had with me for three, three, three to four years for the different applications. The biggest difference, uh, between, I hate the most recent application, was that when they came before the, uh, beautification and BDC, at one point, they suggested doing the windows, much like you're seeing in this grant application, and it was set back to them to say, hey, why are we doing part of the windows and not all the windows? They're, the ones on, that are not as part of this, uh, grant application are literally boarded up, framed up, and they're covered with plywood and it's painted. The question was, if we're looking at performing restorative efforts on the building, why wouldn't you do all the windows instead of just half? So they said, okay, they went back to their contractor, came back to us at a later date with the revised application, which would have been number two for windows, number three in total. And it was, we didn't, there wasn't enough money in the, in the facade book. So we just said, let's not vote on it, and instead of partially doing things, let's just have them come back.
Correct. I'm recalling this now, yes.
Yes.
I do, yes, thank you.
Yes.
I needed you.
I did. So this is, uh, the fourth in total, the third for windows, and they scaled it back, I called right away and said, what happened? This is different than what we talked about last time you came before us, and they said, Bill, it's finances. And I said, okay. Um, I asked them, uh, in the, in the preparation process, would you entertain coming back for the rest of the windows at some point? And they said, honestly, not at this point. So in, in all fairness, this is, you know, the third time for the windows, not that they've been refused or declined for varying reasons over the, the, you know, the, I would assume, I'd be growing weary, I, I don't speak for them. But, um, that's where we're at with the nine.
So my, my, uh, my meeting minutes here from July 12, 2022, from the BDC shows that the, the BDC recommended that the village board uh, approve their facade approval grant, uh, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars, and I don't know that it, that's exactly-
Confirm that the check was from November 10th.
So then the other question I have is, were there any other applicants that applied for a BDC, uh, grant?
This year?
Yeah, under the, under these two, with these two.
Uh, there were no other ones received at the time, I did receive a grant request, um, uh, the accountant next to the railroad tracks.
Uh, Hugger?
Yes, he said, is there any money left in the budget or will it be after these two applications? He said, if so, I may entertain, uh, submitting a grant application for signage. Um, that was one final element of the, the cave's grant, grant application here is to install a sign, which, as long as I can remember, they-
They've never had a sign.
Uh, so this will be the first time, and it's similar to the, um, the other ones in town, the Copper Barrel and Christina Salon. It's a paddle sign, I'll call it, a racket and a swinging sign, there should be a copy of that in there, so.
There is, okay. Projected sign, Bill.
Projecting sign, thank you. Still got it. Wait a second.
Okay, can you help us with the amounts, Mr. Small?
Yes, let me go back first. Uh, the doctor's office, the dollar amounts that I have summarized, there's five components. The masonry was eighty-one hundred, even. The awning was four thousand sixty and sixty-six cents. The commercial steel door for the front of the building, three thousand thirty-four, ten. Paint works five hundred ninety-five dollars. Concrete planters, nine hundred twenty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. This brings me to a gross, wait a minute. I don't have the gross though, you'd have to add up those figures, but I-
You're supposed to tell us that before, huh?
Yeah, come on, man.
I dropped the ball.
I told you I can't remember all this.
No, I do have it, see? Uh, a sign with aging. Um, the, the gross total is sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-four cents. Yes, that is the total of the eligible expenses. The seventy-five percent recommendation, uh, by the beautification results in a figure of twelve thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents, which differs from the dollar amount on the agenda.
Now, does the cave, is the cave correct?
Is the what?
Is the cave's amount, are the cave's amounts correct?
Um, not on the grant application. Um, I had to contact the vendors and confirm the dollar amounts in order to get the correct amounts, but I have, uh-
He means this is not on the agenda, correct?
The amount for the cave, is that, is-
Twenty-two thousand nine seventy-five eighty-four.
Right.
So,
Yeah.
The amount on the agenda, I see-
Does the seventy-five percent
That's seven, yeah.
Reflect the number on, uh, is equal to the number on the agenda under six D six?
No.
So what are the amounts for the cave?
The correct amount for the cave of seventy-five percent is twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty-five.
No, that's, that's for Dr. Hussein.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jeez, my apologies. Um,
The cave is seventeen two thirty-one eighty-eight.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not shifting gears quick enough. The seventy-five percent award for the cave is seventeen thousand two thirty-one eighty-eight, that is correct.
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay.
So the cave is correct?
Yes, it was correct.
Yes.
But what is it? All right, if I did my math correctly, that, that we have ten thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars and nineteen cents remaining in the-
If these are approved.
If there's a glitch.
Right.
Do we anticipate the accountant asking under that if, for signage or?
Oh, yeah, it's probably, it's, in worst case, say a thousand dollars.
Okay.
And there's one other component, that if the expenses are submitted in this fiscal, uh, year, the small project of about roughly five thousand for the replacement of the finials along the west side of the street, so that may come in and that may impact this year's remaining amount within the budget.
You anticipate that will still be within touch?
Hmm, okay. At this point, with the application, then even the pending one for the sign.
Okay, and I only ask because I know the accountant has not signed for the grant yet, this would be the first time, so I wanted to make sure those funds for that.
All good questions.
Thank you so much, you do, um, work.
Oh, thank you.
We appreciate all that you're doing to help, it does sound beautiful, so thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome. Thanks for the answers.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Hey, don't, don't go away, uh, just yet, because we might be, and you can, you feel free to sit, but we might, we might, we might be, uh-
Might be questioned.
Questioning you, and you are more than welcome to answer from your seated position.
Okay.
Uh, board discussion. What are we thinking?
Has the BDC, I don't know if it's under this or not, has BDC said anything, uh, in their, their bylaws for, um, a business coming X amount of times to the well?
No, we talked about it in updating the facade program, uh, should there be a limit, shouldn't there be a limit? And then is it based on address or is it based on building owner, because what if they sell and then years later a different owner wants it? So it has been discussed, but there isn't anything added at this time. And there are instances, a couple of instances, where people have been awarded more than once for the same property.
I know, I remember one, we awarded Hampshire social twice. Yes, I don't remember that, do you remember the other one? That's not my head. So I know we had awarded a business a grant twice. At least one time.
Can I ask a question about the windows on the cave? Sure. Okay, so I don't know what page of this it is now.
It's the I page.
Yeah, I don't, it's, I have page thirteen, it's the estimate that has green on it. There are no, so E numbers, anyway.
It is page thirteen in your iPad, so I get this up.
Yes, okay, so, um, can you just tell me about the windows? It, it's great, they're replacement caseant windows, and they're going to be low E and then, but what are they made out of? Like the windows themselves, not the glass? That matters.
The frame, right, the frame.
It doesn't say, that's why it has.
It says-
Hey, Bill, are these wood or vinyl windows?
They're definitely not wood, my guess is vinyl or wood, I think linens, these look like actually.
They're vinyl, are they, I don't know. Five, yeah.
Yeah, they're definitely not wood.
I, I would imagine either vinyl or-
I just don't want to imagine before I go, go in and ask them, that's all.
Well, at nine hundred and eighty-five dollars-
Per window.
Per window, and they're definitely not wood.
Well, yeah, it's more.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure it's wood.
No, that's the, that's the, that's the coil that they wrapped the frame of the facade.
I read all this already, maybe I'm a mistake, I said, please. I didn't see it. I'm just wondering if you know anymore or if you have pictures now.
I do. I have, when I have tons of original applications, it's like windows, uh, they're vinyl.
Single case, right here, they are vinyl. They're right here and the, the, right underneath that page, uh, Rusty Carter. And there's a, there's a, it's an American brass window there.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't see that. I was looking at that page too.
Probably have a better energy rating than any wood companies.
Yeah.
Speaking for my guy that used to own a window company?
Yeah. That was St. Peter. I remember that.
But my husband's family did that. They, they found it actually.
We still haven't figured out quite how that worked.
Yep.
It's a conspiracy, I suppose.
We just figured it out now.
Um, maybe I'd point out that there was a sign grant, um, issued in this fiscal year to, um, the barbershop and, boutique on State Street. But I'm, just so you know, that, that is not included in the list here, obviously. So, that was an amount of five thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty five cents.
What was the, the budget for the year? Is it fifty?
Fifty? Okay.
Miss Lyons was that, that was approved in the last fiscal year and just paid out in this fiscal year? Right. But it is included in this year's budget. Okay.
Any other questions about these or the amounts?
Well, you know, I'm, I say the same thing every single time. I just, I don't like the fact that we do seventy five percent. With the cave at this point, um, looking, we've reduced our amount that we give for the grants to fifty thousand because of financial issues. Um, and we've already approved twenty seven thousand nine hundred dollars that they were able to appreciate. Um, by adding the seventeen thousand two thirty one brings them to forty five thousand one hundred and thirty one dollars. Um, which I just think is, I mean, especially in a year where we only have fifty thousand, and I understand the previous twenty seven thousand was from a different fiscal year, um, but it totals almost what our total is for this year for all facade grants. And I just don't think it's proper. I do love the fact that the sign is in there because I think that is exactly what the facade grant is, is for is to beautify and to bring light to and et cetera. So, um, you know, I'd like to be able to do partial on the ramp, but I'm, that's.
Well, that's, that's up, that's up to the board's purview. So, I mean, if, if there's people on the board that feel that seventy five percent is too much, we could cut it to fifty, cut it to twenty five. I mean, that, I mean, just because the board decides that they, they, just because the, the recommended, and it's not even an official recommendation from the BDC, it's from the, uh, beautification. But this board's always had the authority to, um, make that adjustment.
And to go on it, I mean, I did request to see what other towns were doing and we came back that we were not out of line in this particular area of, of Illinois with the seventy five percent. So, you know, I appreciate the village and the staff doing that extra investigation for it. So, but I just, I just think it's, I'd rather spread it around a little bit to different businesses and we are only five months, I think into this fiscal year, we have seven more months for businesses to be able to request the grants and, um, I just think it's a lot of money and I'd rather touch additional businesses with people.
So with the timing too, that's one thing we've talked about in the BDC and I know we've talked about at the board is that realistically, at some point, we're going to either need to consider a deadline for grants to be done or ensure a rollover of funds from one fiscal year to the next because the only rule in there right now is you have six months to complete the project, I believe is what the quote is correct.
Something.
And so if we accept somebody, let's say in April or in March, realistically, there, they may, depending on what the project is, like this project, they may not get it done right away. Now we have to figure out at the next budget year, like we've had to do almost every year. How are we going to cover something that was approved in a previous fiscal with new fiscal funds? So I do think to your point, like, and we've talked about this, do you do application, a call for applications at certain times of the year and then that's it? Or hey, the next call for application would be here. I think that's something absolutely that the BDC, the village board, the beautification committee should look at. My recommendation would be to look at when they look at the inter program in, in its entirety. It was the trust deco saying, should there be limits on the number of times anyone business owner, building owner, whatever the definition wants to be, can be awarded something. So a very good point, but it is something that I think there are bigger discussions that should be had too about the timing of when grants are accepted.
Are the windows, uh, currently boarded up? And cave?
Uh, part of them are. The windows that you have before you and the grant requests is for the ones that still have glass.
I believe more without digging into it. I mean, a lot of this is code violation. Am I right? You can't have boarded up windows.
You can have boarded up windows.
You can.
How many years has this program been?
Twenty seventeen, I believe.
We're going on seven years.
Twenty seventeen ish.
I think if, correct me if I'm wrong, business owner, but like, if you're a business owner, you know, the village has this program. So there's still money remaining in the, in the budget this year. I mean, I think going on seven years now, I think all the businesses know we have this program. So holding on to that money just for the sake of maybe somebody will come forward. I don't think that's the right way to handle it. I think if you present an application, we should do that and just float on that, that based on its merit as it is not looking down the road at who we might do what.
We've already got the billions.
I mean.
Finials. That's already come before us. And so at, at that point, then they're working on that one that you'll be coming to us with a total amount?
Uh, the grant has been approved.
Okay, that one's already.
Yes, but it hasn't been paid out. And since the work, we're hoping will get done this fiscal year, then when they submit the receipts for reimbursement, that'll come out of this year's fifty thousand dollar budget account.
Who knows approved in last year's budget?
But he said we'll still, we'll still be under budget. So like my point is, I guess if you want to, a facade grant, you know, we offer them, get your application in, like.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to like necessarily wait around to see if you're going to submit one on the last day of fiscal year. Just my thought.
I do like that they added the sign. That's a new addition. Uh, I, I I get the budget issue. It's too bad when I feel that they don't include the boarded up windows. Just the windows that do have the boards are facing back towards the alley and the, and blocks. The back apartment block is where, or that back gravel block, right? None of it is facing Washington or state. And maybe, are they boarded up on the ones facing state? Cause this.
Borders on the alley. They got asphalt to be paved alley. There's windows on that side, which would be facing west and facing State Street. But it's kind of hard to see and you gotta, I mean, you can see them, but, um, the windows that are glass right now are the ones that are part of this grant, which are, uh, seven on Washington.
Yeah.
And two on Maple.
On Maple.
That face Maple.
Right, yeah.
And we have, had we had a conversation with this, with the cave, had, if it's not funded at seventy five, let's say you draw fifty, let's say it's funded at fifty, will this project still go forward?
I, I didn't ask that specific question, but you raise a good point. Um, what I was more interested in is will they entertain next year, if the program's in place, would they request the rest of the windows? And when I was told that the reasons for the amount of this grant application was due to finances.
Right.
I don't speak for them, but.
Yeah, yes. That's why I asked the question.
Yeah. And that I didn't pose that question. I don't know if it's awarded anything. And, you know, I set the expectation with these folks. I say, there's no guarantees. You could get goose egg. So be aware of that upfront. And there's discussions that take place at the BDC level and at the village board level that I've heard in the past that, hey, we're not, this isn't guaranteed and it's not an automatic seventy five percent. So they're well aware of that. Whether or not they're going to proceed with the project, if they're awarded less than seventy five percent, that I can't say. I didn't ask the question. It's a good question.
Have we ever had one where they did not get the full seventy five percent and then they decided to not go forward with the project? Do we know of?
No.
No, okay.
I don't recall.
I think we've already.
No. But I know, I know that, no, we haven't.
There's been a few that we haven't done.
Yeah, there's been a few that we've actually changed the amount of the projects and still gone through. They just didn't get as much money as they thought they were going to get. So we, and we've made that decision here at the village board, even if the BDC has recommended a certain funding.
Yeah, I remember there's been a couple of times the BDC may have made a recommendation and the village board did a different amount. We've both done lower and we've done higher.
Yeah, we've done lower.
It's been bold directions.
So. Well, I think we've beat this enough. I mean, I feel like we should take a vote on it or a motion should be made one way or another. If you want to, again, it's up to this board's discretion as to what the funding level would be.
Do we make a motion and then discuss funding level or do we discuss funding as well?
Well, as, as it's written, it's written for a total amount. So.
But they're individual.
But they're, they're individual motions. So I think cave is the one that, uh, we need to talk about, I guess. So why don't we make it, why don't I entertain a motion for the doctor's office? Cause we have, we don't see they have a whole lot of concern with the doctor's office.
This is the first, first application.
Worked the.
But I will say, I mean, their first time submitting.
It is the first time, yes.
And I would like to use the correct amount of twelve thousand five hundred and thirty five dollars and sixty five.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Questions, comments? Ms. Clark, can you call the roll please?
Scott Strini, aye. Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Spoder, aye. Mr. Karen Rowan, aye. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Motion, yes, six two.
Okay, next for the next amount. So right now it's, the funding recommendation is seventeen thousand two hundred and thirty one, which is, uh, seventy five percent of which was lost. Um, so at, I'm scrolling here. So that's, that's what they're requesting here. So the fifty percent is just about eleven or twelve thousand here.
Eleven and a half full call.
Yeah.
It's almost twenty three thousand total. So it's eleven thousand five.
So I will say, and this isn't in regards to a percentage amount, but just overall for this project, Mr. Swallow, correct me if I'm, I'm misspeaking on this. I will say that as you heard, they've applied multiple times. They have jumped through every, and addressed every concern that has been raised to them every time they've applied for this. They have been very good in the application process and listening to Mr. Swallow and feedback. So regardless of where this ends up, I do want to commend them for being so flexible and patient. This has been a multiple year discussion. Um, they didn't have to, um, they could have just kept resubmitting the same thing, that seemed where it went, but they followed Mr. Swallow's advice and the feedback. So I just want to, regardless of where this ends up, commit for their willingness to work with the feedback.
And I had just one other thing. I realize that we're talking a lot of about how much money they've gotten and that part is true. Um, and I'm not, I'm not throwing shade at, at, at the business, but that place was an eyesore and it had a connotation for doing its own thing and not being involved in community events. And they've really changed their persona over there. I mean, every event that we have downtown, they, they're a part of, they sponsor things in town now. It's a place that I don't want to say that you could bring your family because I don't have a cave. That's what I'm saying. But what I'm saying is, is that like, but what I'm saying is, is it used to be, it used to be a lot rougher than it, than it is now. And it's a much friendlier environment and they're much more involved in the community and they're good community partners for the chamber and they're good community partners for the village. And so I, I not that, not that that should throw a lot, I mean, it's not, but what I'm saying to, to your point, it's not like they haven't tried to work along in every initiative that we've had. They could have complained a whole lot when we did streetscape. Instead they embraced it. I mean, there were, there were businesses that were pretty upset about us shutting downtown or every time we had closed our downtown for different events. These guys are always like, bring the people down here. Let's, let's do it. Let's try different things. And so like I said, to, to that point of like being a community partner, I think that it's, it's well worth saying. So and to your point, they did jump through and continue to jump through every single, if you ever asked them to, and they don't complain about it. So, well, what it's worth. I'll entertain a motion. I just, I don't know what you guys want the motion to be.
I will move to seventy five percent of the proposed amount.
Wow. So that's at the seventeen thousand two thirty one eighty five.
Eighty eight.
Eighty, eighty eight, eight.
I'll second that motion.
Shall we do a first and a second? Do we have any questions and or comments?
Comment?
Sure.
I'm going to vote yes for it because it's a local business. But I implore the BDC to really get serious and put a limit on how many times we can bring up their code enforcement stuff because that's what this is, is code enforcement. So I implore BDC to come back with something where, where these owners know upfront, you get two shots, you get two grants in your building's lifetime or whatever, whatever you guys come up with. But I think there needs to be a limit on what they can come forth.
On how many times and.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Just to briefly address that, uh, one thing we've always reminded you is there's no underlying ordinance for this program. So someday the village board should just pass an ordinance and say, this is how the program works. That doesn't give the BDC any flexibility in percentages or how many times or if you want to make rules, because we have staff has changed this program at least three times since I've been here, at the request of the BDC or the village board. And every time we do, you guys come back and do something different. So that's fine. But if you really want to set in stone and pass an ordinance, then that would be the right way to do it.
You want to take that up for us?
Sure.
Five hundred dollars an hour.
We'll get back to you.
A bunch of.
So we do have a first and a second. We do have, it said, questions or comments? Are there any additional questions and or comments? So Ms. Clark, can you call the roll please?
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Spoder? Aye. Sternroom? Aye. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Scott Strini? Nay. Yes, it's five one.
Okay.
With that, we would ask your consideration under ordinance approving bond parameters for general obligation bonds for the public works facility. I'm just going to underestimate Miss Lyons with no authority so I don't say the wrong thing. This is pretty complicated.
Um, so I tried to lay out the important parameters on a brief list on your agenda supplement, um, with respect to the bonds. Um, this is the next step. Uh, we hope to sell the bonds next week, um, with the closing on October ninth. That will be getting close.
Mr. Bruselli, is there anything you'd like to add to this?
Uh, Miss Lyons, an excellent job. I would say that, um, there's been a lot of blood, sweat and tears that has gone into this, um, bond transaction. And no, this is, this is great. I mean, I would strongly recommend this. Um, these bond ordinances are very complicated, but when you've read as many as probably Miss Lyons and myself have, they all start to look the same to a certain extent. Um, this is very, this is a standard transaction, maybe not for the village, but for the public finance markets for villages of this time size.
Any questions or discussion?
I have two. Ms. Lyons, what's the village's current rating?
We are double A minus, 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 just one minus.
Two ratings better than the last bond, sure.
Okay.
From two thousand sixteen.
Well, my, my only concern on this or question to you on this, and, and this is from me doing Google searches and utilizing AI to try to find this information. Why do we have a maximum bond interest rate of five point five percent? Cause everything that I found showed current interest rates much lower than that.
Well, we certainly don't want to sell at an amount higher than that. So we set this parameter, uh, parameters for an incentive max.
Right. My question is, why are our max that high versus
Well.
four and a half or five or why didn't, how did we get to five and a half percent?
So this was recommended by our financial consultants and, um, we need to sell the bonds.
Then they'll sell faster at a higher rate.
Well, this is, this is not rate setting. Cause it will be, you know, we, uh, these, when you call that, a negotiated.
They're going to sell that's to, with that's finalized as a bond order. So we'll come back, we'll do that at bond ordering. Part of this ordinance is delegating the authority for staff and the, uh, shooting executive officer, the president to execute a bond order and the final amount. Five point five to me is a parameter is not out of line. They will not, I really don't see it selling for five five. Um, but five five as the absolute highest point is not, I don't think it's out of line. I don't think it's unreasonable. I just think that's a reasonable number for the nature of the economy right now and everything like that. I mean, we have, you take all this into account, right? And while we do have, we have a great rating, should be very proud of our rating. Um, we are not a home rule unit, right? So that, that gives different tax authority and they are more favorable in the bond market. Um, if we were home rule. So I understand your point. The Raxpert did speak. The expert said five five. I think I mean, we, if we're going to have this deal bond, try to, that comes up again. I think five five is reasonable.
So our financial person has said they think that's what it will come in at?
No.
No, no, they said that the highest point.
Highest.
Remember, so in the old, I'm going to take one step back. This is called a parameters ordinance for a reason. It's a, it cannot go beyond these parameters. In the olden days, um, like an old time. Back when I, when I wrote my force here, the first time, um, you would pinpoint that you would see the bond is going to be issued for this amount. This is parameters. The ceiling of what we can issue for, what you are all saying we can issue for is five five. That was the recommendation. We do not believe it'll come in at five five. We believe it'll come in under five five. Does that help?
It does.
Along those same lines then, what are we looking at as today? I mean, for that bond amount for that.
They're starting bidding it. They have to set us bids next week.
Okay.
A market that's created, a market that's been created based upon a couple of factors. And I'll just be very blunt and this is not a policy statement, but there's an Illinois tax. Illinois bonds go a little bit lower than other, um, issues. We have a double A rating, which is great. The negative means we have a negative type of outlook that they're not really, that, but that's, that's nothing bad.
The negative means we have a negative type of outlook that they're not really, that, but that's, it's nothing bad. We have limited revenue sources because of our size and because we are not a home rule unit. And these matters get priced and the timing gets priced based upon bigger deals that clog the market or are more attractive because they're home rule unit type deals. So I would say, I, we can add, let's do this. Let's ask that question and get back. You will see that number in the bond order when it comes through. We, we will report back after the bonds are sold. The next board meeting is on the first of October? No, on the third of October, on the third of October. And so the, so it will be, the, the bond order will be done by, it'll be signed. So we'll tell you what the bond order is. But a market will be created based upon those financial figures, right? And that's just how it is. I mean, I don't know, I, and again, I don't mean to draw on your personal experience, but I remember in two thousand and eight nine, when we were doing BABS, you know, the Build America Bonds, the market was skewed, right? And then they're, they found a hedge in the market and changed everything because the, just a lot of finance, 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 right? Tool trades, whatever. But it is, and we can't tell you what that market is. I can tell you right now, the authorization set forth nicely, we can't do an interest rate of more than five point five percent. We don't believe in any circumstance it will come in at five point five percent. Not that I'm trying to jinx us, um, but the bond order will be issued, it will be executed, we'll circulate it or do a memorandum with regards to the same. Um, but I can't, I'll say one more thing, trustee, then I'll stop talking because I'm talking way too much. If I could pick the number that the interest rate would come on, I would probably either be in Las Vegas or New York thinking a lot more money is going to get me. All right, so I can't make that market because then I would, I would automatically hedge it, right? I would go higher or lower on it. So, so that's, that is what it is. And negotiate sale, whatever, banana.
Okay, good, Mr. Viselli, please.
Sorry, so one question, something you just said, Mr. Viselli. Maybe not in regards to the interest rate, but in the process.
Yeah.
When I've been a part of votes for bonds in the past, and not necessarily on this board, but in other governmental agencies, the board voted on the final details and payment schedule and all of that of the final bond. If I'm hearing you correctly, that will not take place. This authorizes staff and the village president to sign and finalize without it coming to the board.
Sure. There's one paradigm that does come back for the board. I actually had this happen, it will not happen either, is the parameters change, right? They said the interest rate has to go higher. And it was just a market thing, we had to do bonds because the finance people, we have better finance people than we had in the other location, we had this article. We, there was a mess up and we had to come back and we had to say we need a couple extra interest rate. Um, so no, this is not a pinpoint. This is a delegation to staff and the clerk and the president to effectively do their jobs and activate these things within the parameters of what you guys are authorizing us to work on going forward. This is comparable and trustee, this is how, um, all but two of the transactions that I've worked on in twenty-five years of doing this have gone down.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a ordinance approving bond parameters for general obligation bonds for the public works facility project.
So move.
Second.
Sir, questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll please?
Spoder, aye. Mr. Derram, aye. Mr. Kelly, aye. Mr. Coe, aye. Spouse Straining, aye. Mr. Robinson, aye. Motion, yes, six zero.
Thank you. With that, we would ask for a motion to approve progress payment number five to Lamp Inc. for Public Works Facility Project, the amount of one million five hundred and two thousand ninety-eight dollars.
Miss Lyons?
Um, it's pretty straightforward.
Not much here, just money. They're making good progress on the building, this is what we owe them.
Yes.
There's not much more to it than that.
We will be drawing this amount from our interim financing line of credits. And, um, that loan will be paid off by the proceeds of the bond.
How much do we have left of that?
Uh, five hundred and forty-four thousand and change, I believe.
After this payment?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, oh, after the payment?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Uh, that was the amount remaining on the line of credit. Um, got it.
A million coming out of our own coffers plus.
No, no, no. No, I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question, that the five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars would be the amount remaining on the line of credit after the straw.
Okay. That's all matters.
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not, we're not getting a million dollars. I mean, that would be, we could do that if we had to, but, um.
No, that's, that's all I was asking, which was left after this payment.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Will we have the bonds in time for the next payment?
We will, yes, because the closing will be out, it's scheduled for the.
At nine, at nine.
And, and we normally are moving these in the second meeting of the, of the bonds, so be on your mind.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the progress payment.
So move.
Second.
Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll please?
Mr. Derram, aye. Mr. Kelly, aye. Mr. Coe, aye. Spouse Straining, aye. Mr. Robinson, aye. Spoder, aye. Motion, yes, six zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next we have the streets report and the police report. Please review them at this time. Any questions about the police report? You can address to, um, X over there, his bow tie, because he seems like he knows all about law and order.
She's working on it, isn't she?
This guy, he's got that from stuckies.
People.
It is a tie, sir, I just want, I want to be very clear. It's practically, it's a corbat, it's a tie.
And if somebody were hanging on that hair, we'd jar of that, so it's all over each other. You got spurs on those shoes?
I don't, you know, it's me.
Any questions about the streets report or the police report? Thank you very much for submitting them. Next, we have the accounts payable to personnel, the amount of three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. Be paid on a report September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable to personnel.
So move.
Second.
Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll please?
Mr. Kelly, aye. Mr. Coe, aye. Spouse Straining, aye. Mr. Robinson, aye. Spoder, aye. Mr. Derram, aye. Motion, yes, six zero.
Next, next we have a small amount of four hundred and eighty-five thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-two cents to be paid on a report September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
One request?
Request.
Okay. On page twelve of this. I can't. No, that is the printed page. It is page fourteen on the iPad, twelve on the page.
It's twelve, okay?
Okay. Um, where it says Safari Gent LLC, it would be really helpful if we could maybe, um, indicate that that vendor is not the amusement park.
We have really cool evidence tape.
Park because evidence, it took me a very, it took me about twenty minutes of my lunch today to figure out what that would be. And I would be fine, evidence tape at an amusement park.
You have a lot of questions to answer. They ran an amusement park.
I, I was really concerned, like, how did we get over this?
But you should see our evidence tape, it's got, it's got like, you're going to shoot some zero.
I was concerned that maybe we were using the tapes that we had earned from the. Unfortunately, we won't be able to comply with your request. That is the, uh, vendor name that comes on the checks.
Is that where we cut Mr. Viselli's bow ties, far lane? Howdy.
You know, I do read these in vaps like every time and I was like.
I appreciate that.
A couple lines underneath that, we tried to be more specific on where the water main breaks were starting sun, so. Appreciate that, because then I was like, oh, that one, yeah.
Any other questions?
Uh, page eight off of the paper, just the James Chrysler, um, oh, never mind. I've seen them and I see squat person, never mind. I want to know what, if it was for the public works or the, please. It's actually the purchase of the two squats came in, okay.
Saw one the other day, wasn't parked in the lines, but I saw one.
Don't have to do that.
Few months, see it back over. There you go.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular accounts payable. So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, call the roll please.
Mr. Kelly, aye. Spouse Straining, aye. Mr. Robinson, aye. Spoder, aye. Mr. Derram, aye. Mr. Kelly, aye. Yes, six zero.
BDC, you already covered that you didn't have a meeting and we talked extensively about the facade program. What is it that you would, what else would you like to cover this evening, Mr. Kelly?
Nothing to report of this stuff.
There, enough.
Actually, I do.
Two that you want.
I do just want to again thank Mr. Swallow for all of his work with the local businesses, the facade program. I don't think the board realizes how often he's on site meeting with business owners and vendors and contractors. I mean, he's almost like the GC for downtown Hampshire. Um, so just sincerely on behalf of, of myself, the BDC, I hope I can say of the board, thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's all I have to say.
So before we talk about new business or other announcements, I'm going to steal the scene and I would like to make an announcement. Uh, don't give me that one. This is really important. This is Jay Hedges' last meeting. And, and so. We could have been very mean.
Your luck, you've waited.
They were so lucky, we didn't know.
You waited to say that to him.
Didn't even have a trial.
Um, so, so Jay is leaving us. Um, he's going to work for another village, you know, I'm kidding. He's, he's, he's retiring and, um, I know I, I've put the same statement out more than once and I know, um, he's probably tired of hearing it, but we would not be where we are today had it not been for all of his efforts. And all of the times that we've aggravated him, especially during board meetings, um, or, you know, in, just in general. Um, I know that, um, and I've said this more, more than once, that I would be, I'm like a mediocre mayor as it is. And so I'd have been a really terrible mayor without Jay because his, um, guidance and the way that he gets stuff done. And it's, it, it's been a really good relationship. And when I won, he could have said, you know, tough luck kid, you're on your own and, and he, and he stuck it out. And so he promised us four years when we brought him in in twenty nineteen. And we got five out of them. And so we're proud, we're proud that, uh, he stayed and, um, gosh, we're really going to miss you. Um, but with that, um, I have a proclamation here for, uh, for Mr. Hedges. And it's, uh, and I normally don't read all of these, but I'm going to read this one, so I apologize in advance. Whereas we are here today to express social recognition and, uh, special recognition to Jay Hedges and to honor him for his distinguished years with the Village of Hampshire. Whereas Jay began his career in city management at Hoffman Estates and Prospect. And whereas government, Governor Thompson created a post for Hedges as an assistant to, uh, to the governor for local government affairs, where he worked as a liaison for the governor's office, to the Department of Commerce and Community Affairs and several other state agencies. And whereas in nineteen eighty-six, Governor Thompson appointed Jay Hedges as Director of DCCA, where he directed the state's, uh, economic development efforts to the late nineteen eighties. And whereas in that role, he led the state's work to retain the Sears headquarters and guiding Illinois, moving their, uh, headquarters from Chicago to Hoffman Estates campus and keeping the then top retailer in the state. Whereas Hedges helped bring Diamond Star Motors to Bloomington and laid the groundwork for long-term industrial and commercial growth in the state. Whereas Hedges then joined the private sector, serving as president of several companies for over thirty years. And whereas Hedges was appointed village manager by the village president and board, uh, board trustees in twenty nineteen to oversee the state and the operations of the municipality and implement the board's policies. And whereas Hedges, Hedges has consistently worked for the betterment of the Village of Hampshire and the community. When whereas the Village of Hampshire wishes to express its sincere appreciation to Hedges for his dedication and outstanding performance of his duties during his tenure. Now therefore, I, Michael Reed, Jr., President of the Village of Hampshire, and on behalf of our governing body and citizens of Hampshire, do proclaim Friday, September nineteenth, uh, as Jay Hedges' day in the Village of Hampshire. One more thing. Well, he's locked it up here, keep playing him. He has a lot of house or not, but I figure either he can put this on his mantle or leave it in the box and put it in his closet. But everybody, everybody that works here is affiliated with here, gets one of these, uh, one of these, yeah, thank you, it was right the way, it was right the way I was looking at it. One of these and, and we just, we can't let you get out of here without one. I don't know if you want to like pose with it or.
Thank you. Eric, thank you, Jay. Oh, you guys too, thanks Bill. Congratulations.
All right, thank you. Good luck, you got quite a board here.
I'll watch him, just keep going up the door.
Do you have any speech or anything you want to give?
Uh, I just want to say thank you. Um, I said some of this the other day for most of you who were there. Um, it's just a pleasure to be able to cap my career by public service like this. Uh, it just feels good and, uh, means a lot to me. After a long time in the private sector, if we come back and apply those skills again. So, uh, this is the last time. Thank you all very much, I can't say much more than that.
And, uh, if you guys had a seat, we have the honorary Jay Hedges wave right on the festival block, right on, right downtown. We've got a sign with your name that will forever be.
My neighbors are already coming down to take a selfies.
Well, we can't say enough and if the board, if you guys have anything you'd like to add.
I want a little cut of future, future earnings, okay?
If, if anybody has anything they'd like to add or any other announcement at this time.
I think we're three of us, three of us are here. We hired Jay and I think that was one of the best decisions that we've made as a board. You've, it's been phenomenal, you've done, you've done so much good to this.
Now it's time to take it to the next level.
Right.
Dude, start from where you are now and keep.
Yes. Thank you for getting us to this point. Thanks, Ed.
Any other announcements?
Jay, I'm taking motion to adjourn. So.